Okay, great. So this is the January sixth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting, reorganization meeting of the Middle Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, and this morning we have one participant on Zoom, the township engineer. Is there a motion for the approval of the agenda and any amendments?
Motion.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Starting organization.
Yeah, yeah, we have to.
Make a make a motion to nominate I'm at Harrison Chairperson.
On second, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to, okay, make a motion to nominate to appoint Markoni as Vice Chairperson?
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, do you want to slip to Ben, which is number?
Ben is number twenty-one.
Okay.
Twenty-nine.
So would you like to make that motion? Mark?
Sure. Make a motion to make. Make a motion to appoint Gilmore and Associates with Ben Coats, PE being your representative of this is township engineer.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also with the thirty-one of Sewer Department Engineer, if this is about the word.
Okay.
Take a motion to appoint the firm of Gilmore and Associates with Ben Coats, PE being the representative Sewer Department Engineer.
On second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so if we can go a little bit out of order, we're skipping to other business number seven. For the engineers report regarding Manwallamink Sewage Planning Module. And if you turn to your packets, you'll see the email that Ben had sent and Gilmore's recommendations and you'll see that they were expecting response from the township by December twentieth. So Ben, you want to take it away?
Sure, yeah. And real quick too, thank you for the reappointment. Enjoy working with all you. Looking forward to continuing to work with you in two thousand and twenty-five. So on December sixth, I'd sent over an email. We had reviewed the Act five thirty-seven plan update, which is a sewage planning module, and that was associated with the transfer of ownership for the Manwallamink Wastewater Treatment Plant between Manwallamink Sewer Company to Pennsylvania American Water Company. This is something that DEP is now requiring with the transfer of privately owned treatment plants. My understanding is that it largely stems from circumstances that unfolded out in the Pittsburgh area where I believe PA American was obtaining. It might have been a handful of treatment plants out there, and there wasn't a public notification process made available. So basically, the transfer of ownership just happened. People were unaware of it, and then rates suddenly got hiked on them, and DEP basically modified their, you know, planning module process to try and cover these types of transfership or transfers of ownership so that the public was aware of them going on. Going through it, only had four comments. I can go through them real quick. The first was what they call their certificated, I don't know if that's a word, but certificated franchise area shown on their planning area, plan shows that a portion of the property at two oh seven Fritchy Drive as being within their sewer service area. Our sewer service area per the last five thirty-seven plan that we did, which was, I believe, implemented in like two thousand and nineteen, also shows this property being served. So I thought it'd be worthwhile to just note that that should be clarified as to who is serving it in case whenever they're looking to connect, just so that that's confusions avoided. The second one was I recommended that Pat review the section regarding the administrative and legal activities, which is in section seven B in the document to just make sure that the delineation of responsibilities between PA American Water Company and the township are accurate. This is where they talk about, you know, what's, you know, basically, within the right of way falls under the responsibilities of PA American and basically everything beyond the right of way would be building code related and largely fall on the township. There's a few other things where they're delineating responsibilities that I thought it would be worthwhile to just make sure that Pat had a chance to look at that. I don't know if he has. I haven't heard anything from him regarding that. So I, we can come back to that one then. The third is that the sewage planning module in the public notice does not include any information regarding future user fees for township residents that are served by Manwallamink Treatment Plant. And this is typically something that's required for these planning modules. And then the fourth one is just making you aware that there is, I believe, just one pump station that Manwallamink Sewer Company currently owns that's within the township. And that would be getting transferred over to Pennsylvania American Water Company. We've seen this happen with other municipalities is that DEP is basically taking the approach that although it is privately owned, if they fail to follow through on their maintenance responsibilities that the township is essentially looked at as the backstop for them. And so, you know, whether it's a treatment plant or a pump station, if yeah, they, they drop the ball and things go a bit haywire and, you know, they're not maintaining their equipment and there's any type of, you know, overflow condition or anything like that. They're going to look to the township as the, you know, since we're by Act five thirty-seven ultimately responsible for sewage treatment within the township, it's going to fall on you. So this is just making reference to a section of PA Code that has come into play in the past where you know, you could potentially be requesting financial security from PA American to cover yourselves in case that were to happen. Typically, it's done more so on new systems, say, I don't know, like a mobile home development goes in, they're putting in their own separate private system. It, it makes sense, you know, to upfront get a like maintenance bond basically to cover yourselves in case you're called in to, to make necessary repairs. But this with the transfer of ownership here, it might be something that's appropriate. Again, I don't know if Pat's had a chance to look at or has any thoughts on that as well. But.
And that bond is based on replacement cost?
Exactly. Yeah. So per chapter seventy-one, section seventy-two, it allows for a bond totaling ten percent of the cost of equipment and installation for the life of the system. So that's where, you know, there would have to be an assessment. We're, we're just talking about one pump station here for them, you know. Smithfield Township has the vast majority, you know, the treatment system and probably fifteen or so other pump stations. So but still, it's not nothing, you know, if, if that pump station has issues. Is it a high, high likelihood that you're going to get called in to deal with it? If you haven't to date, it's probably pretty, pretty minimal, but just wanted to bring it to your attention as an option.
Yes.
This, this two oh seven Fritchy Drive, how big of a parcel is that? And, and, and how close is it to our existing sewer line?
Here, one second. I'll, I'll do a screen share and show you where it's at.
The only thing that's on Fritchy that's on our sewer system is Pyramid. That's it.
So how far do we, two oh seven's got to be done by the skier?
Let's see.
To be part of that sewer system.
All right. Can you see this map here?
No.
No, you haven't.
There we go.
Okay, so Pyramid is up in here. And the, the property in question is all the way down here. This is actually, um, it might actually be one of the properties that was up for the zoning change. Question? It, that, that's what we're talking about. It's right here.
All right. Are, are they the only two residents of Middle Smithfield that are affected by this?
It's just.
The conflict?
No, no. Who, who's being served by this sewer system right now?
Who's being served? It's, uh, it's all of this, uh, these developments up here are currently being served by Manwallamink.
So the ski area?
Yes. Yeah, that red, that red border, that's their, that's their, what they call their certificated franchise area.
So all the townhouses on?
Hollow Road.
Middle Smithfield's on a hollow road, or?
The townhouses as well.
Yeah, yeah. Looks like that.
Yeah.
Yep.
And do we know if they've notified all the users?
I do not know that. No. Um, technically, this is, they, I believe they were running the public notice, which again, their public notice is really just a, a posting in the Pocono Record. I believe they were running that concurrently with the notification to the township and or townships and to the county. So they were hoping that there wouldn't be any comments, and then they could basically go right to the adoption phase. She said, depending on the nature of the comments, DEP might require them to have another public notification period. So.
Smithfield has had this on their agendas for their public meetings, and they've also posted this on their website. I don't know if they've taken the trouble to mail everybody.
Well, I, I would say that, that we couldn't proceed until we, we have comfort in the fact that they've notified the users, not.
Of their town, of their township.
Of our township.
There's only one. There's only one corner of one property.
I don't understand. I don't understand the map. What's the straight dotted line, Ben?
The straight, the, the, what, what, the, the black here?
No, no, down below, the straight dotted line.
Oh, that, this is, this is the township boundary line. So this is, this is an overlay. Sorry. It's an overlay of two different plans. So you'll see like the light green hatching in this like black dash line. That's our service area map from two thousand and nineteen, when that got approved by DEP. This one with the black dash line and this red bold line, that's their plan showing the certificated area. I, I had one of my coworkers just overlay the two so that we could see where these two were in conflict or where they were aligning with one another. So that.
I, I'm not understanding. That hollow road area is Middle Smithfield, isn't it?
Right here it is. Yeah, but this, this is the township boundary line here.
So again, I'm, I'm confused. You said there's only one property, but you have all the townhouses that are in Middle Smithfield that are in the service area.
Sorry, what I'm saying, there's, there's one property where the, the, the boundary lines don't align with one another. That's what I'm saying. So we're showing this in our, this one property is being shown by both in their service area.
Right. So that's the conflict.
That's the conflict that just needs to get worked out. We're saying that we're in agreement that for our plan that, yeah, these, these are all being served by Manwallamink slash, you know, in the future, I guess, PA American. Right? But Mike, Mike's raising a good point of, you know, have these individual property owners been notified of the potential transfer?
Right, sure. Yeah.
So.
They should individually be notified.
Right. So I guess as far as actions go, I, we could add that in as a comment. Would you like, I'm trying to think of how to act on this since two of them was kind of a recommendation for Pat to review it. I don't know if he's had a chance to look at it. So I'm trying to think how to make the motion on this.
But what, what is the ask right now? That we proceed with certain comments?
Yeah, so this is, this is an opportunity for the township to comment on the planning module. So at this point, we're not adopting anything. We're just offering comments on it. We're given like a sixty-day timeframe to respond, and that's, that's what this is.
So I would say all of Ben's comments are accurate. We would add that we would want all of Middle Smithfield Township residents who are on this sewer system to be notified of the changeover. But also, my question to the board is, the portion of one property that two oh seven Fritchy Drive, I, I would be in favor of it going towards this same to be consistent, to go with every, to go with every, the man of, man of the sewer system. Yeah.
So you, you think it's a whole grid that it'd be served by Manwallamink?
Yes, rather than our sewer system.
Okay.
But, but does that mean we have to amend the five thirty-seven?
No. They're in our five thirty-seven, but they're in their five thirty-seven too.
Right. So do we have to mend or?
No.
That's a bad question because it needs to be clarified.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't think it would have to because any, any planning module is, is in effect revising the current Act five thirty-seven planning, right? So whatever gets memorialized and adopted within this is essentially revising the Act five thirty-seven plan that's already in place. Like, for instance, like the property off the Oak Grove, they were reaching out about, you know, the issue they're having with their septic system, whether they can connect to public sewer. It doesn't require the township to go through, you know, a full revision of your Act five thirty-seven plan as long as they, they pursue the required revision. So.
Right. So that, that's fine, but I, I still want to go back to my comment about notifying owners or users, and that would be not only existing users, but also landowners in the area that, that are affected.
Right.
Those people may not even know that it's not, not our sewer that they're.
Well, those not hooked up may not even understand that they're able to hook up.
Right. Yeah. But they should know that, that this potential exists that this system is going to be sold to PA American and that their bills are going to skyrocket.
Well, you can't comment.
Right, it's, it's.
We can't comment on what their bills are going to be. We can, we can certainly say.
Since you know that, I mean, from past history, private purchasers of sewer systems, what, increase it three hundred, four hundred percent?
And then, and then the comments will be from the people who live there. Middle Smithfield Township raised my sewer rate.
Correct.
Yeah, and that's, that's, yep, trying to.
I mean, I'm.
Well, mo- most of them understand because they send a bill and they send the bills to Smithfield. So most of them understand that they're Smithfield sewer users and not Middle Smithfield. Occasionally, Joan will get the stray bill made out, stray check made out to the wrong person. But they, they for the most part.
This is Smithfield. This is Monwallam.
Yes, and they understand that they're not Middle Smithfield.
Oh, except for the people that don't, aren't connected.
Right.
This will be detrimental to every resident involved. And, and.
Well, right now.
I, I would be opposed to it no matter what.
You're opposed to Smithfield doing, but we have no jurisdiction over their sewer treatment.
Understood. But I, I, as far as representing Middle Smithfield Township residents, I would be opposed to it. In its entirety.
All right. So it sounds like, so the motion would be for the four comments as laid out in my December sixth email plus the comment about the need for all existing users and any landowners within the, you know, their certificated franchise area within Middle Smithfield Township that they be notified of the proposed change in ownership and notified of where they can access information on it.
By certified mail.
By certified, okay. And then I will, if you're fine with this, I'll maybe see if I can just give Pat a quick call today just to talk through his last two, see if he has any thing that he would like to add to it, but the, that, I guess that would be the, the motion, if that's fine with you.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. I, I will follow up with them then. So nothing else needed from you at this time, and I'll let you know once I hear more.
Yeah. Thank you, Ben. See, that wasn't so bad.
No.
Happy New Year.
Yep, happy new year to you as well. Have a good one.
Thank you. All right. Okay, so that brings us back to reorganization. So we're up to number three.
The motion to appoint Annette as Administrative Director, Annette Atkinson.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to appoint Michelle Clue as Assistant Administrative Director.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye.
Make a motion to make Markoni Operations Director?
One second, Ben.
Huh?
I can second that.
If you want to.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to, oh, well, somebody else will have to do that one.
I make a motion to make an Assistant Operations Director? Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to make Markoni Planning and Zoning Director?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to make Public Works Director, Mike Dwyer.
Second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to make Treasurer, Mike Dwyer.
Second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to make Markoni Assistant Treasurer?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to make Michelle Clue Township Treasurer.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to make Holly Dennis Assistant Township Secretary.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to make Bonnie Crispin, Fortune Finance Manager?
Second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to make Michelle HR Director?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to make Christopher Rain, Open Records Officer?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to make John Royzen, Alternate Open Records Officer?
On second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to make Mark, Safety Chairman?
You know, I'm losing.
Well, second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to make Corey Recycle Coordinator?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to make Bonnie Crispin, Tax Broker Committee Delegate?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to make Kylie Madrano, Alternate Tax Broker Delegate?
On second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Make a motion to make a law firm of Graham Bean and Thatcher and Pat, with Patrick Armstrong as part of being the representative or township solicitor?
On second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to make the firm of Whitesman, Whitesman and Huffman, alternate township solicitor with Deb Hoffman being representative?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to make the firm of Jackson and Lewis with Keely Collins being representative as employment law solicitor?
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to make the firm of Whitesman, Whitesman and Huffman with Deborah Huffman being the representative or planning commission solicitor?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to make a law firm of Graham Bean and Thatcher with Patrick Armstrong being the representative, the alternate planning commission solicitor?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Herman Newman with Williams, with Bob Kidwell being representative or zoning hearing board solicitor?
On second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Firm of Pat, Patrick Lentz and Bubba, Alternative Zoning Hearing Board Solicitor?
Second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to make John Pravod as the UCC Board of Appeals Solicitor?
Second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
We've already appointed the township engineer.
Herman Riley Associates with Chris McDermott being representative alternate special project township engineer.
On second, any comments or questions?
Just to clarify, it's just the one, right?
Yeah, I thought.
Okay. Yeah. No, no, I'm fine with that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We've already done the sewer department engineer.
Make a motion to make the firm of Gilmore and Associates with Mike Schwartz representative of the last four engineer?
On second, sorry, all in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to make our consulting with Zach Karasic, he, whatever his name is, Dan Nansen, Steve Sell, Sewer Enforcement Officer?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to hand over the ears with Jacob Schray, Scott Brown as representative for alternate sewer engineer or enforcement officer, excuse me.
On second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to make SFM Consulting with Sean McGlinn being the representative or zoning officer?
On second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to make SFM Consulting with Lori McCory being representative or alternate zoning officer?
On second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Make a motion to make SFM Consulting with Sean McGlinn being representative of, as our BCR and building inspector?
On second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Motion to make SFM Consulting with Sean McGlinn being representative or code enforcement officer?
On second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Motion to make SFM Consulting with Judy Acosta being the representative or assistant code enforcement officer?
On second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
No.
Make a motion to make SFM Consulting with Sean Brett McGlinn being the representative of the floodplain administrator?
On second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
No.
No appointment on appeals board?
Make a motion to make Richard Allen Key, Chairman of Vacancy Board?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Missing him today, Mike.
Huh?
I'm missing him today.
Oh, he's doing his kitchen. You want the email?
I should congratulate him.
It's, it's like the reason why he can't be here is like, you know, eighteen paragraphs. Make a motion to make a net compost processing board?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And make a motion to confirm Economic Development Committee members Beverly Brown, Ed Regina, and Deborah Emin?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Make a motion to appoint Jared Acosta as the Economic Development Committee Chairperson? Any comments or questions, all in favor?
Make a motion to make Rachel Heller our emergency management coordinator?
Any comments or questions, all in favor?
Make a motion to make Mark only Mc Dennis and Joe DeBarlo. March nine for deputies? Don't take it bad.
Alright, let me see, uh, on second, any comments or questions? All in favor? Make a motion to appoint, uh, Robert Huffman for another five year term on the historical commission? Any comments or questions? All in favor? And just a note, uh, there is no vacancy on the historical commission because we did appoint. The board, this board appointed Rick Provaznik to, uh, finish out the three year term. Make a motion to appoint Carrie Weatherby as historical commission chairperson?
Second.
Any comments or questions, all in favor?
Make a motion to make Carolyn the tax. Parks and Rec Board, five years.
Any comments or questions, all in favor?
Make a motion to make Jamie Smith Parks and Rec Chairperson?
Second.
Any comments or questions, all in favor?
Motion to make Mike Dwyer, Parks and Rec Director.
On second, any comments or questions, all in favor?
Motion to make, uh, for your term in the planned admission, Robert Early?
Second.
Any comments or questions, all in favor?
Motion to make Mike Dwyer a representative to con with the other two supervisors as alternates?
On second, any comments or questions, all in favor? Yeah, uh, I'll make a motion to appoint to the revitalized two oh nine committee that is an annual appointment. Um, the board, uh, nominating to appoint Michael Coffey, Ralph, Ralph Dinkle, Deborah Emin, George Kuchek. Nick Theophilos, John Kawadi and Sonny Murray, Murray.
So.
Any comments or questions, all in favor?
Make a motion to appoint Joan Royce and James. Rec File and Bobby Getz to the safety committee for a two year term?
Second.
Any comments or questions, all in favor?
Make a motion to make Mark only voting delegate of P S?
On second, any comments or questions, all in favor?
Motion to appoint Melanie Schmidt to the zoning hearing board, five year term?
On second, any comments or questions, all in favor?
Motion to set the treasurer's bond at five hundred thousand dollars?
On second, any comments or questions, all in favor?
Make a motion to set the assistant treasurer bond five hundred thousand?
Second.
Any comments or questions, all in favor?
Make a motion to set the budget and finance manager bond five hundred thousand?
On second, any comments or questions, all in favor? Make a motion to set the blanket employee dishonesty bond at one million dollars? Any comments or question? All in favor?
Make a motion to make E S S A or depository for general funds?
On second, any comments or questions, all in favor?
Make a motion for Wayne Bank? Um, and bringing in invest- or investments depository for general fund and payroll?
On second, any comments or questions, all in favor?
Make a motion to make Wayne Bank depository for sewer funds?
On second, any comments or questions, all in favor?
Motion to make the S S A depository for state fund?
On second, any comments or questions, all in favor?
Make a motion to make Wayne Bank firing tax and EMS tax fund depository?
On second, any comments or questions, all in favor? And make a motion to, uh. Have bills that impact normal operations such as discount, that we may suffer loss of discounts or may accrue penalties or payable when due. When approval confirmation at the following meeting, it'll be ratified at the following meeting.
Second.
Any comments or questions, all in favor? And make a motion for our regular meetings to occur once again on the second and fourth Thursday of every month at seven o'clock. With the exception of January sixth, twenty twenty five, November thirteenth, twenty twenty five, and December fourth and thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Any comments or questions, all in favor? And make a motion to schedule regular board of supervisor workshop meetings to occur every Friday at eight A M. With that being the primary work session unless otherwise indicated and advertised by the township.
Second.
Any comments or questions, all in favor? Make a motion to set the mileage rate at the I R R guideline for the use of personal vehicle or township business per mile at seventy cents per mile?
Second.
Any comments or questions, all in favor? And make a motion to adopt the employee handbook as written?
Second.
Any comments or questions, all in favor? Just a side note, that can be revised at any time during the year, but we do this every year. Uh, make a motion to adopt the employee safety handbook as currently written? Any comments or questions? All in favor? I make a motion to recommend to the Eastern Monroe Public Library Board of Trustees. As the representative of the library of the Smithfields, Jason Phillips. And Jason Phillips would be replacing Deborah Emin who, uh, needed to resign. But that would be our recommendation to the Eastern Monroe Public Library Board.
Second.
Any comments or questions, all in favor? That brings us to. Approval of the minutes, I would make a motion to approve the minutes with some corrections. Um, one correction would be the amount, uh, of. The general fund that was approved. On December nineteenth, that amount on page three should read two hundred and fifty eight thousand, five hundred and fifty eight dollars and twenty nine cents. Uh, two hundred and fifty eight thousand. Four hundred and fifty eight dollars and twenty nine cents. Is, you look at the. That is because what was taken out. Was the two hundred and seventy seven dollars and thirty six cents. Excuse me?
Doesn't pay it up to him?
Well.
I think the four fifty eight is wrong. The four fifty eight is total. You gotta take out. The two seventy one, or two seventy, I don't know how it was, two seventy seven thirty six.
Well, originally you had made a motion to approve payables in the amount of two hundred and fifty eight thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and ninety three cents.
Eight hundred and ten dollars?
Yes, that's what's in the minutes, eight hundred and ten dollars.
Correct, that's not right.
So what I'm saying is it should be corrected to two hundred and fifty eight thousand, four hundred and fifty eight dollars and twenty nine cents. As it adds up on the general fund lens.
Uh, which is not, it, it, the amount total is correct, but that's not what direct, the. Motion was, the motion was less the two seventy seven thirty six.
Which amount?
The two fifty eight, four fifty eight is the total.
The total general fund?
Gross.
Right?
Less two seventy seven thirty six.
Is.
Is like. Whatever. Whatever, one hundred and eighty one or something.
One eighty something.
Yeah. Four five eight point nine minus. Two seven.
Two seventy seven thirty six.
Two seventy seven forty six. Is one eighty ninety three?
Two fifty eight, one eighty.
Yeah, two fifty eight. One eighty. Point nine three. Got it? No, no, two five eight. One eight zero point nine three.
So that's what the motion was for the general.
Correct.
Okay. So that's one correction, and the other correction would be to identify the folks from Raj. So on the front page, it says public participating in person, Raj investment?
Yeah.
But the, the, the two people that were here were Vipul, and I'll spell this, Holly, Vipul, Gopani and Prashant Kathari. So it's Vipul, V I P U L. Gopani, G O P A N I. And Prashant Kathari, that would be P R A S H A N T. And Kathari, K O T H A R I.
Okay, the, she just transpose the eight and the one.
Okay, so. So the motion is to, okay, so motion made, Mark seconds, all in favor? Aye. Alright, there's no public here. Public comment on non-agenda items. Uh, Holly, do we have any correspondence? Uh, there's no, uh, attorney, so there is no report of executive sessions. That leads us to the treasurer's report for payables.
Make a motion, general fund sixty nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty eight dollars and forty six cents?
Comments or questions, all in favor?
Make a motion for more sewer count seventy three thousand, five hundred and sixty five dollars and twenty cents?
On second, any comments or questions, all in favor? Uh, there's no solicitors, no solicitors report, we did the engineers' report already, there is no old business. So that brings us to new business. I'll make a motion to authorize the township secretary to advertise the twenty twenty five township public meetings. Any comments or questions, all in favor?
Make a motion to adopt resolution oh one twenty twenty five dash one, which is retainer decapulation forms and fees.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Make a motion to adopt, uh, resolution oh one twenty twenty five dash two, this is residential building code fees.
Second.
Any comments or questions, all in favor?
Resolution oh one twenty twenty five dash three, which is the building code fee?
Any comments or questions, all in favor? Make a motion to adopt resolution. Zero one dash twenty twenty five dash four, which is the fee schedule for calendar year twenty twenty five? Any comments or questions, all in favor? Make a motion to adopt resolution zero one dash twenty twenty five dash five, which is the sewage. Receipt and fee schedule from sewage enforcement so- services? Any comments or questions, all in favor? And then letter G is ratifying what has been done. Um, so the motion is to authorize the budget and finance manager to close the P N C bank account. For supervisors, Middle Smithfield Township Security for the Lake of the Pine Sewer Account. And transfer these said funds to the Middle Smithfield Township Sewer Fund Account.
And, and I would note that. The, the fee, uh, the amount is eighty seven, forty eight, oh one, plus interest, less any bank fees.
So there's been a motion, is there a second? Any comments or questions? All in favor? There being no public, I doubt there's any public comment, any public comment? No? Alright, motion to adjourn. About which thing? She has the list. I mean, every township does it.